I will call this meeting to order. City Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Councilmember Lang.
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Meadows.
Here.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Here.
Vice Mayor Flagler.
Here.
Mayor Daley.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, I can't get my computer going right now, so I'm operating off memory. Councilmember Meadows, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you, Mayor. Please stand if you're able and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we did not have a closed session, so there isn't anything to report. I will look at my colleagues and see if anybody wants to make a change to the order of the agenda tonight. All right, we will go then to our special items. First is the recognition of our employee awards. So for 2025, we've got Rising Star Julia Recker. We have exemplary performance Heather Kressel and Sean Morales. And we have the Employee of the Year Grant Gabler. And they're here, and I would like to present certificates and maybe we'll go over by the city seal and get pictures? Awesome. I do just want to say a quick word about our staff. Many times, city employees go under or unappreciated. And I just want to thank not only the recipients of these awards, but all of their colleagues who make this city the wonderful place that it is. So, thank you all. All right, on our second special item, also a fun recognition item, we have STEM Award winners. STEM being science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. And there are a number of young Los Altons who have received this STEM Award this year. And several of them are here tonight. And we have certificates as well for them. So I will do my best for pronouncing the names. We have Dia Bengani, Viva Bengani, Anav Bordia, Takumi Joe Britt, Adi Kenchamana, Bhavya Krishnan, Saraya Avril Lum, and Avish Roy. So those of you that are here. So here what we'll do. If you guys want to line up in the order that we have the certificates, right? And then one by one, come up and shake hands with a picture of them or something. Well, I'll tell you what. And that person will come up and get it, all right? All right, can everybody hear me? And even though I'm not on Zoom, is this going to work for... Yeah, you know what, John, I've got one I can use. All right. So. The first recipient will be Viva Bengani. Congratulations. Here we go. Thank you very much. Next will be Anav Bordia. Congratulations. Nice to meet you too. Takumi Joe Britt. Congratulations. Adi Kenchamana. Congratulations. Bhavya Krishnan. And Avish Roy. I think we've met before. Yeah, you get a lot of awards, don't you? Oh, we didn't get that. We didn't get that. Good job. Saraya Avril Lum. All right, let's have a nice round of applause for these young Los Altons as well. All right, now we're going to do public comments on items not on the agenda. Do we have any speaker cards? Okay?
Not a presentation.
Ah, yes, yes. I know, I know who you are. I'm sorry, I remember from last year. I should have deferred to you. But this gentleman's going to share with us more about these STEM awards and the program. So, thank you.
First of all, I want to thank Los Altos for its commitment to the youth. Because that's the... I say now, everybody talks about the future. I'm saying now is an expression of their desire to contribute, to help someone, to make the world a better place for us, to make it more intellectual, to make more people understand what nature has for us and what it offers us for helping and striving together. And so I'm very proud of these youngsters. I'm a member of the Santa Barbara Science and Engineering Fair Association. We hold the fair, the Synopsys Championship Fair, that these students participate in, and they are awarded based on their STEM merit. And so we ask the cities to come and join in and encourage them to continue. And so we thank you for this. And our job as a board member of the Santa Barbara Science and Engineering Fair Association is to awaken in each person the idea of science and what science can do for us. And encourage youngsters to participate in this revolutionary opportunity. There is nothing that you can do that an engineer has not put his hand on it. Touch a thing, whatever it is that you touch, there is an engineering view of what that is and how it cooperates with you to make your life better. You know, there are challenges, people use it for the wrong reasons and all that, but the good that comes out of it outweighs the bad. And I want to thank you for seeing and encouraging these students to continue. And our job is to continue that effort. And what better to bring them to you, to have you encourage them further? So, thank you very much.
All right. Public comment on items not on the agenda? Still no cards?
Still no cards.
Okay. So then we'll go to, we'll turn to the consent calendar. And I'll first look to my colleagues and see if they want to pull any of the items and address them individually.
I would like to pull number five.
Number five, okay. So, then I will entertain public comment, we'll entertain public comments on the consent calendar on everything except for item five. Any speaker cards? No, okay. Then I will look for a motion to... Yes, Councilmember Weinberg, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to put on the record that I'll be voting yes on the consent calendar, but I'm voting no on item 12, which is the bicycle ordinance. And I'm voting no for the reasons that I stated at our meeting two weeks ago. Also, with respect to item 13, that has to do with micro-surfacing, I want to disclose that I own real property within 500 feet of one of the roads that is to be micro-surfaced. But I am not recusing myself from the item because the micro-surfacing does not provide a benefit or detriment disproportionate to other properties receiving the services and because the decision solely concerns the repair and maintenance of an existing street. And I am relying on FPPC Regulation 18702.2A6 and D1 for that position. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Weinberg. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to put on the record that I'll be voting no on Agenda Item Number 12, Adoption of Ordinance Regarding the E-Bike and E-Scooters, but will be voting yes on all the remaining items on the consent calendar. Thank you.
Councilmember Lang?
I agree that I also own real property within 500 feet of the streets discussed in item 13. I will not endeavor to repeat the words that Councilmember Weinberg said so very well. You know, yeah.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything that they need to put on the record? Okay, now I will entertain a motion to pass the consent agenda. Okay, is there a second? Councilmember Meadows is seconded.
Second, yes.
All right. And Clerk, please call the roll. And we'll note that both Councilmember Weinberg and Vice Mayor Flagler have qualified their votes on the consent agenda.
Councilmember Lang?
Yes.
Councilmember Meadows?
Yes.
Councilmember Weinberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Flagler?
Yes.
Or sorry, Vice Mayor Flagler? Mayor Daley?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously for the consent calendar with a vote of no on item number 12 by Councilmember Weinberg and Vice Mayor Flagler.
Perfect. All right, now we will take up item number five. Councilmember Lang, since you asked to have this pulled, would you... First, I'll see if we have any public comment on that item. Are there any speaker cards for that item? Okay. So I will defer to you to offer whatever you would like to kick us off for discussion.
Yeah, and I had some questions, and I am always very hesitant to put staff in a position of sort of last-minute questions, especially on technical topics. And, yeah, just with the holidays and some of the comments that came in from the public, it was just late. So I just wanted to speak a little bit about the web presence and my concerns on this agenda item. As many of, I'm sure all of you know, and perhaps some members of the public know, the city is changing its web presence and its way of interacting electronically with the residents in the public. And, you know, look, I've done that a lot professionally, and I recognize that such transitions are always very awkward. I also recognize that the back end of what was there before was a terrible mess of spaghetti and was really difficult to live with. And so, you know, it was long overdue. This is a necessary step, and so I don't want any of my thoughts to suggest otherwise. I also want to stress that every time you change a website, people have myriad complaints, many of which are just not appropriate for council to pay attention to, right? Like, inevitably, I don't like this font. I wish the layout was different. Such complaints, people always have them, and they're not really our issue. It's best for us to defer to staff and the experts they work with on those sorts of things. So it's not about that, although I'm sure those things are out there. But some issues do begin to warrant council attention, in my opinion. One of those issues is that right now, one thing that we've lost in this transition is the ability to have a landing page for a meeting. If a member of the public who wants to participate in a meeting wants to know what the pages I go to to see the agenda, the packet, but also the Q and A, the Zoom information, all that, we don't have that page. You can find it, and we're, you know, not suggesting we're not compliant with the law. I believe we are. Nevertheless, I think that sort of thing takes a step backwards in encouraging public participation. It makes it harder, and we should always be on the lookout for that, right? And then there's another issue that I think is, in many ways, even more important, right? Which is, this wasn't just a redesign of the website. It wasn't just taking an old website and putting a new website in place. We have contracted in a very new way, put intermediary between us and the public, right? The company is called Civic Plus, a third-party intermediary. From my research, I think this is probably a pretty sensible choice. They seem to be a market leader. Those things tend to be important because, like, we want to be able to hire staff, and the chances are they've used it or have heard of it or whatever. We don't want to be off in some technical outlier. But nevertheless, it's an important moment, right? Electronic interface with the public is one of the main ways we interface with the public now. And to me, it's very important that we're attentive to this, right? And particularly, particularly, I am concerned that this intermediary is introducing third-party software and is introducing legal agreements that are required to use this interactive tool. You know, on some level, we get very used to this. We get used to this all the time. You go to any website, the pop-ups come, yeah, you can have my firstborn child, whatever. You're urgent to get your business done, and so you click right through that sort of stuff. And in commercial arrangements, that is what it is, right? Those are voluntary arrangements. But this is the government. This is the government. And I think we have a special duty, in my opinion, to make sure that every obstacle we put between the public and their government gets a lot of scrutiny. And I am concerned that we have not given this enough scrutiny in this process. In particular, you know, just to go to the website, for the recreation website that we're talking about today, just you go to that website, if you know what you're doing, you can open up the developer view, you get a big wad of Facebook code. Why? We currently do not know the answer. We've asked, we're still trying to find out. There may be a reason, to be clear, and I'm not, it's not a conspiracy theory, but if a member of the public wants to look at the recreation offerings of this government and is required, in order to do so, to accept a bunch of code from Facebook, and there are other companies there as well, we should at least be able to answer the question, why? Right? Another thing is, there are a number of legal agreements, four legal agreements. There is the Privacy Agreement and the Terms of Service Agreement from Civic Plus, and because of all the software that's used from Google, the Privacy Agreement and the Terms of Service from Google. And I'm uncomfortable that this matter, to me, this matter came to the point of view where it probably should have received council attention. And particularly, the privacy statement or the privacy policy of Google, the word advertising is mentioned 15 times in there, 15 times, right? They are saying that if you want to use our software, some advertising aspect of that is going to be the case. Now, to be clear, that may be a good trade-off, right? They have excellent recapture technology that prevents spamming of websites, and I think that's important, and it may be well worth doing that trade-off. So I'm not saying, oh, we can't have that. Like, a lot of the internet runs on advertising, and that's just a reality, right? But I do think that the question of whether residents of Los Altos should be required to accept code that in some level is involved with advertising for large companies is, in fact, a policy question. And that is the sort of thing that should be coming before council, in my opinion. Likewise, in the Civic Plus, the Terms of Service there say that, and Terms of Service are a contract. They're a flimsy contract. I'm not a lawyer. Kind of flimsy. But nevertheless, it is a contract that you accept by using it. In the Terms of Service there, you agree that you will be, that your, any disagreement about that will be governed by the laws of Kansas, Kansas. So a resident of Los Altos that is trying to do business with the city of Los Altos has to agree that they are going to be bound by the laws of Kansas. Again, maybe it's worthwhile, it may be worth doing, right? But to me, that is a policy thing that, once again, should be bought before council, right? So, all that said, I think it's an effective website. I think the Recreation Department website is effective. I also think it provides a very necessary utility for the city and the residents. And honestly, I think once we go through all this, it probably is the right answer, right? So at the end of all this, I am going to be able to vote yes on this. But I couldn't vote yes on this as if it were routine and just belonged in consent. To me, consent doesn't just mean it's okay. Consent means everything surrounding this decision is okay. And to me, right now, that's not true. That right now, we are introducing intermediaries between the government, the people, and their government. And we, on some level, this is on us, right? Should be more attentive to that. Probably more than people bargained for this time in July. But I felt it needed to be said, and I appreciate my colleagues' patience with me saying it. To be clear, I'm going to vote yes because I think the utility is required and so forth. But I felt there is enough concern in the community that we are not being attentive enough to the use of the website, right? I don't think anything will be gained by me throwing some protest vote out there, right? And I think, in the end, I think it's probably the right choice. And I particularly don't want to disrupt the ongoing rollout, right? But I did want to go on the record to say that I am concerned that real policy issues are not going well in this transition, and I hope to work with you and the staff to improve that situation.
Councilmember Lang, would it be satisfying, regardless of the vote, if we provide guidance to staff that says, "These are really important issues, not trivial issues, and we expect you to track down these answers," and to the satisfaction...
If my colleagues feel that that would be appropriate guidance and want to join me in that, I'd be very pleased to support that.
Well, let's hear from everybody, but yeah.
Yeah, that would be, that would be good. So I'm confused because you seem to be mixing, and it might be appropriate, but I don't get that from the staff report, mixing the rollout of the new entire website with the Recreation Management software. And maybe they're the same vendor, and I didn't remember that off the top of my head. But what we're looking at tonight is what's been used for four or five years, whether it's easy or not or clear or not, you know, I don't know. But we don't build our own software. So can you clarify for me? Because you've gone back and forth between the rec thing, but mostly have talked about the overall website. That's really not what we're looking at tonight. And if we want to agendize concerns with what we see about the website, we can talk about that a little bit later. So can you clarify?
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, thank you.
It is, it is the same vendor. Very much the same vendor. And in fact, the, what really gave me pause was when I looked at the situation with the thing that we're approving tonight, which predates me, of course, but nevertheless, looked at it, and discovered that many of the same concerns I had about the main website are also appearing here, right? And just felt it should all get out there. You're correct, right? And about that, right? This is, the main website is not what's on the agenda, but is the same vendor, and many of the same issues are arising in both. And so I'm using the time to bring attention to something that I'm concerned about, and I've received numerous comments from residents also sharing these concerns.
So then as follow-up, and this might not, you can rephrase this question if I'm not asking it right. And you can answer it any way you want, I guess, is what I'm saying. So your concern is more broadly the overall website rollout and lesser this particular software, but the intersection being, you know, across from the same... Anyway, you know where I'm going.
Yeah, let me be as precise as I can to answer this, right? Because there are a bunch of concerns, and I was trying to be as precise about saying some of them are worth discussing but are not at the heart of my issue. The heart of the issue for me is that, because this is an important tool for interacting with the public, anything in that tool that acts as an obstacle or a burden on a member of the public seeking to interact with the government should warrant extra scrutiny. And the two examples I gave were, one, the introduction of code without notice and without obvious purpose into their browser, right? We should at least be able to answer why. And then the other is the requirement that they agree, probably cursory agreements, I understand that, but nevertheless, we are asking them to agree to two contracts and two privacy policies in order to register for any of those sorts of programs that we have, right? And so the general concern, which I think, again, fonts, Helvetica, Arial, not our issue, right? What I'm saying is, what I do think rises to council-level concern is that anything that is a burden or obstacle, possible compromise of privacy, any of those sorts of things, for people who are seeking to interact with the government, is a policy trade-off that we should be insisting on good answers, attention to diligence about, and while recognizing that since we click through those things all the time in our lives, I do it all the time, right? It's easy to go, eh, eh, right? But this is the government. To me, it's different if it's the government. That was my point. I hope that clarifies.
One quick second, Vice Mayor, and then I'll come to you. I just want to try and summarize and bring the, bring everything together if I can. So, same vendor, same issues in the website, the general website, that you're seeing in the Recreation Website that runs the Recreation Management Software, which does things like reserving fields and so forth. I mean, these are basic functions of the rec department that have been going on for a while. I suspect what we're going to find, but I want the answer, right? And I want it in writing. And I want it in writing from the company, right? But I suspect that what we're going to find is, many of these things are artifacts that are related to things like affiliate marketing and other commerce that goes on on the web, and it's normal to include those APIs or hooks in the code so that somebody can run things like Google Analytics and/or, you know, Google Affiliate Marketing or, you know, so forth. But we need that, right? So, is that, am I capturing the sense that you brought to this?
That's correct, right? I think much of it is, in fact, quite routine, which is why I don't intend to vote no, right? But it seems that we should be able to answer the question, why? Or if somebody says, oh, these Terms of Service, have you reviewed them? We should be able to say yes, right? Like, that's what I'm getting at, right? Is that it's the diligence, and absolutely, to clarify, not conspiracy theory, right? I don't think there's anything crazy or conspiratorial going on here.
We should just add that.
It's simple, okay. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks, Councilmember Lang, for bringing this forward, and I really appreciate your explanation. To add to what the mayor is requesting, and I support the request from staff, it's also looking at the other jurisdictions, which I understand also have the same software, because to Councilmember Lang's point, we may end up with the same software even if we try to negotiate the Terms of Service. But it'd be important for us to understand that this is a take-it-or-leave-it situation with the other jurisdictions as well. So, for example, if we look at what Palo Alto has, and somehow they were able to negotiate not having these things that we're concerned about, then we should push for that as well. Or is it a situation that you get, you buy this software, and this is what it comes with? And any comparable software is going to come with this as well? So, I'd be curious what other jurisdictions that have the same software, if the Terms of Service are the same and everything else that Councilmember Lang had mentioned. And the privacy issue is a big issue as well.
So, just as a brief update, some of the issues that have been brought up have been resolved already. So, you should no longer have to create a profile to access the agenda, everything on the website. The website that hosts our agenda management software, it's actually the agenda management software, not the website, that is creating the PDF-first HTML issue and some of the other issues Councilmember Lang talked about. We've already started negotiations to update the agenda management software. Once that is completed, the HTML will be restored. So, a lot of the feedback that we've heard, we agree with, we're working on it, should be rolled out by August, September. We have asked for a response from Civic Plus in writing about the code intrusion. We have not received that yet. Once we receive that, we had intended to provide an informational update to council that went over everything. If council would prefer that's done in person at a future meeting, that's fine as well. A number of the issues that we've heard, we've addressed or are in the process of addressing because it made sense. Once we turned the website on, we realized that our agenda management software didn't play nicely with it, even though it's the same company. That became problematic, so we worked to fix that. I'm happy to bring the answers back in whatever format council desires.
Okay. So, now I will look for a motion to approve item five with the guidance that we have stipulated.
I'm ready to make the motion. I just want, you're comfortable moving forward with this? Because I
I am, thank you.
I found your comments compelling, but it's an area in which I have very little knowledge, and I trust your judgment. If you're willing to move forward with it, I'm willing to make it.
I am, thank you.
And Councilmember Weinberg, before you make the motion, I think, if I heard correctly from the city manager, he was looking for direction. Do we want an off-agenda memo? Or do we want them to report back to us at a public meeting?
I'd be fine with, presumably, the memo would also be public document for anybody who wanted to see it. But for me, I'd just as soon get it in writing as timely as possible, and we can circle back if we need to.
My preference, and I think it will satisfy everybody, is that it is an information item on a future agenda. So, it will be, the public will be privy to it, we'll be able to read it, but we don't need to deliberate. Is that okay?
Yep.
All right. All right.
I move that the council adopt, yeah. I move that the council adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Los Altos, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement on behalf of the city with Civic Plus LLC in the amount of $138,896 for three years to provide Civic Rec, a recreation management software.
Second?
Councilmember Lang?
Yes.
Councilmember Meadows?
Yes.
Councilmember Weinberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flagler?
Yes.
Mayor Daley?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. We do have some information items on the agenda, but we don't need to go over those. Those are part of the packet. And we'll go right to staff and council reports and new business. Councilmember Weinberg?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any proposed new agenda items, but I do have a report. I hosted office hours at the end of June, and that was worthwhile as I had several people come and talk to me, and I had some very productive conversations. Last week, I attended the America 250 flag raising by Daughters of the American Revolution at the American Legion Post here downtown. It was a brief but very dignified ceremony. The flag, I think, is still on display, and I encourage everyone, when you're walking by, just take a look at it. And I'm happy that that's where the DAR flag ended up. I really think that was the appropriate, it's the appropriate place for it. I attended, as I think all of us did, the Glorious Fourth Celebration on the Fourth of July. And as far as I remember, this is the first time that every council member has actually attended. So, that was nice. It was a good day, the weather was nice, and the remarks were brief but meaningful. The firearm buyback ad hoc committee met with the chief and Captain Kraus. We will be ready to report back to council in the near future, assuming there's room for it on the agenda. Finally, I want to report to my colleagues that last week, I met with the city clerk, and we talked about changing the structure of the youth commission this upcoming academic year to better position the commission to advise the council and to make the commissioner's services to the city more meaningful, both for them and for us. So, I'm really excited about it. I think that it's really going to elevate the usefulness of the commission, again, both to us and to staff and to the members of the commission. So, I wanted to share that upcoming change with you.
Thank you. Councilmember Meadows?
I thought of a future agenda item, though it doesn't have to be a discussion. It could be an informational item. As my colleagues probably recall, and I think it's been about a year and a half since we adopted safe routes to school as our goal over PCI, but we had the hopes that PCI would also continue to improve. So, if the timing is right, and the city manager, you can let us know, I think it's been about a year and a half, maybe not as long as that, but can we get a read on our PCI so we can see how that's doing while we focus on our goal of safe routes to school?
I believe we do, Councilmember PCI, every other year, but let me confirm with Aida, and certainly, we can report that back if we have it.
All right, yeah. The timing might not be right, but when it is, it would be good to know.
My preference on the timing on that would be after we do the street resurfacing project that we will likely approve at our next meeting.
Very strategic, Mayor.
So, let me check. We have the same contractor do the PCI, and I believe it's every two years. So, I'll check on that.
That's all for me, Mayor.
Councilmember Lang, no. Vice Mayor?
Nothing to report. You know, Councilmember Weinberg already mentioned the Glorious Fourth Celebration that we all attended. You know, thanks to staff, Jamie left, but thanks to staff for putting it together. It was well-attended and well-done, so thank you.
Yeah, I have to say, thanks to staff, too. And I made a few brief remarks, and, you know, I thanked our residents for being there and a number of other, I thanked the band, I thanked everybody except staff. And staff really deserves kudos because it was a wonderful event. There were hundreds, hundreds of people there. And just flawless. I mean, nobody had any complaints, everything was handled exceptionally well. And just a really nice touchstone for the summer, especially when the world is chaotic and not everybody is happy about the way everything's going in the world. But they can be happy about the way things were going in Los Altos on Friday at the Glorious Fourth Celebration. So, thank you all. And with that, let me wait another few seconds to see, no. I'm going to talk for another 12 minutes to hit the, no. We're adjourned.